Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for being here. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Like I said, good morning, everyone. I want to explain a couple of things that we have changed here. The rules of the room is that you are welcome to come up and speak at any point in time. There'll be no comments from your seats. You must come up to the podium to speak. And if you don't wish to do that, then you're welcome to leave at any point in time. All comments are recorded, and so that's why all comments will be made at the podium only.
Also, there's been some upgrades to the microphones in here. Hopefully, everybody's hearing better than we have in the past, and look for some feedback on that. Sean's been working on this for us, so.
Now, just shut it off.
You shut yours off?
Yeah, I just shut mine off. Well, there we go. All right. All right, approval of the minutes for the December 18th meeting, and we will be tabling the January 2nd.
Move to approve.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Legal issues, Mr. Clutter?
None today, gentlemen.
Very good. Great start to the day. Guts, second amendment.
Yes, this is for the existing lease that we have with Government Utilities Technology Service to occupy the fifth floor of the E-Bank building at Penthouse. And so this really extends their existing lease to and through December 31st of 2025 with the same rental amount of $16,500 annually. I have reviewed and would recommend your approval and execution.
I'm going to show proof.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next is the phone system. Guts?
I'm sorry?
The phone system.
Good morning. Sean Graham, Boone County IT. As everyone knows, we have been reviewing the multiple RFPs we received for the rest of the phone system for the county. We've narrowed it down, or have narrowed it down, to two vendors, that being Ring Central and AT&amp;T. We brought both of those vendors in, did some demos, and made the recommendation to the technology board that we go with Ring Central. The contract that Bob has been reviewing has fulfilled our needs. It's within budget, and we believe it is the best overall technological solution for the county. And it is our recommendation that you approve that contract pending final legal discussions.
I have reviewed the agreement. There's one minor modification, so I would recommend approval subject to that.
I'll make that motion subject to Bob's modifications.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Three signature spots for done.
Three spots for done.
Oh, great. All right, next on the agenda is the third-party use for the BCSSI.
Yes, as you're aware, you receive operating grants for local public transportation through Section 5311 of the United States Code. And you have a vendor that supplies that, which is Boone County Senior Services. They are recommending that we have a specific lease. Indoc is recommending that we have a lease with Boone County Senior Services, just setting forth the scope of the agreement. And I have reviewed the lease and would recommend your approval.
Questions?
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, ordinance 2024-01, amending ordinance allowing funds to the distribution of a distributing officer of law. Oh, and that comes from the auditor. Sorry if I messed that all up, so.
That's the prepay ordinance.
That's the prepay ordinance, which we originally adopted a prepay ordinance in 2001 per cent of state statute. We've amended it multiple times. This particular amendment was requested by the auditor's office. So, one of the previous amendments allowed for the prepay of juvenile grants. They are requesting that we eliminate the work of juveniles, so that all grants we receive can be prepaid. And then this also allows for the prepaid contracts or invoices for goods and services executed by the Director of Highways or the Director of Capital Investments in an amount not to exceed that authorized by the Commissioners, which as you are aware is $10,000. So, if we get an invoice or a contract that Nick or Mac sign, those could go prepaid also. So with that, I would respectfully request your approval of ordinance 2024-01.
I just have one question, actually. I think it's just probably something that didn't get updated. But in the paragraph where it talks about amending the ordinance, that new item that you talked about, Bob, is item 27, but it's got the language that it looks like from item 26. So, if that is correct, I would just make a motion to approve it with that amendment.
So, okay, yeah, there may be some confusion. So, the way the ordinance previously, the one that was adopted in 2020, is recited in full. And that's number 26.
Right.
If you go to the next page, is the amendment which shows that 26 is there and then 27 is added for contracts or invoices.
Right, but so if you go to item 26, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Where that item 26 in the prior ordinance, the second paragraph, or the second whereas? I'm just wondering if that reads correctly. And I apologize. I meant to say something prior to the meeting, but.
Okay, so payment, or number 26 is payments to hospital or medical laboratories for toxicology or other testing services requested by Boone County officials. That was the one that the prosecutor's office requested in 2020.
Right, but in the second paragraph after that, it says whereas Boone County, Indiana now desires to amend the aforementioned ordinance to provide for the dispersing officer to also be allowed to make payments to hospitals or medical laboratories.
I see. Yes, that should be updated. So, I will make that if you want. Sorry, I apologize. I missed that one. So, if you want to approve it subject to that change, and then Kayla and I will work on amending that.
Yeah, I made that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
What were we amending? Can I make some other changes?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Auditor. Can we add 4H? All of our contracted entities that we pay aspire and all of those. Last year during our audit, they said that because we pay them through prepaid, they really need to be on our prepaid ordinance, even though there's a contract that most.
Contract that was approved by the Commissioners would cover that? Would you want to add them too?
If we could.
So, what's.
And I don't know if you want to amend it to say outside budgeted entities. I don't, I don't know how you want to do it.
So, this would include?
Do you have language from the auditor that we could look at?
Just to add, just to add.
But, but did they?
So, it'd be.
Do they have a list? I guess is what I'm asking. They have a specified list of things they want done? Can you send that to us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can we look at it for next, next amendment?
We'll look at it again next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we took care of all that, and we're done with new business?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to old business, appointments for 2024.
Yes, so the Alcohol Beverage Board. Can you update it?
I've got an update for the Alcohol Beverage Board. I spoke with one of the members of the board, and our former appointment, Mr. Sutton, has turned in his resignation to the board. I don't believe that resignation has gotten to us yet. But, I, for one thing, I want to take a minute. I don't, I can't even begin to tell you how long Bill Sutton has served on that board and done a fantastic job. So, I just want to say thanks to him for all his years of service.
Absolutely.
We don't have an appointment at this point in time. That's an open board seat, Alcohol Beverage Board. And we've got some interest, limited interest at this point. So, if anyone's interested in that board, please contact us.
But the other appointments that are still open, I have Peter Boa. I will receive the letter of interest from Nicole Lewis. This will be a one-year term.
I'll make a motion to approve, Nicole, those.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
The second appointment I have is Serta. I reached out to Nathan Messer, and he requested to be reappointed. I've not received any other letter of interest. That's the central Indiana regional transportation.
How long ago did you reach out to him? I think that's something we have to take a look at. Nathan no longer sits in that position he was in when he took the seat. So, I just think we need to review it before we do this.
And then lastly, the Boone County Health Board. Do you want me to name while we receive letters from?
This one.
So, we received interest from Crystal Jones, Jill King, Matthew Baim? Sorry, did I pronounce that incorrectly? Nicole Molinaro, Paulette Berger, Tricia Wright, John Casey, who was appointed by council, and Robert Guckin, G-U-C-K-I-N. The mayor of Zionsville, he submitted his letter of recommendation for commitment. That is Paulette Berger, Sandra Burkhardt, and O'Callaghan. And there's three opening seats for four-year terms.
I, I reached out and I spoke with most of the applicants within the last couple of weeks. And all, all the applicants are well qualified. There was some questions about the mayor's list as well, as far as eligibility, and I did look into that. And they are all eligible. So, I would, I'm happy to talk in any further detail you guys would like, but I would like to move to appoint Matt Bain. There's, there's three groups that we appoint to. Group one, one who is a physician. And I would move to appoint Matt Bain in that position.
I have reviewed myself, and the individuals that are existing on the board have done a great job for us. So, in that vein, I can't second that.
Well, I mean, we do have, we've had five new applicants on the board, and I understand that, you know, of course, the Health Department's going to recommend the existing board members, as I would expect them to. Since there's new interest, I, I think it would make sense. Everybody's qualified. They have very similar experience. Some of them have unique experience that I think will make the board even stronger than it is. So, that's why I'm making the motion that I made.
All right. Well, since there's no second, the motion dies because of lack of second. Now, we'll re.
I, I would make a motion to reappoint the existing members of the board.
No second. No second at all, so, or I guess I do, I do have the power to do that, and I'm very careful with that. I wasn't expecting that today. Things never go as easy as you think they will. Because of past history and the recommendation of the Health Department, I, I will have to second that. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. And that's it? All right. All right, Comcast.
This is a letter.
Justin, in the nick of time.
Please.
The roads were a little slick coming in this morning. Happy to be here, though, and I'm thankful for your support as we are actively now preparing an aggressive application in the next level connection, this round four program through the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. And we do not have the final proposal yet to share with you. As soon as we do, we will bring that to you and show you the number of addresses that we want to build five or two, and how much of an investment Comcast is going to be making. We just received back the final list of approved addresses in Boone County that the Office of Community and Rural Affairs says are unserved or underserved. And so, we're actively now putting together our proposal. And we're so grateful to Boone County for agreeing to write a letter of support and provide a nominal local match. We think that'll boost your points in that application. Because remember, you're not just competing amongst ISPs. You're also competing amongst counties for this $80 million in round four. And we think that Boone County has a really good shot at getting one or more applications approved in this next round. So, next month, we will be submitting an application, and we're very excited about it and honored to have your support this morning, should you give that support.
Jeremy, have you had a chance to review that list yet that they sent back to you?
Yes, and I have it personally, but our engineering department is actively doing that right now.
Do you have a, just a rough estimate of how many addresses are on it?
I apologize. I.
I didn't know if you did or not.
My apologies. I can email that to you later today.
There was an effort made, just so the public understands, there was an effort made. We were sent an original list from, I guess FCC.
Sure.
Is that who sent this originally? Yes.
Yep.
That was, we felt very, very short on its oversight of Boone County as a whole. And so, we resubmitted a couple of different times. So, hopefully, we've got a much larger list. We, they came back with us the first time with only 2,400 addresses that were underserved in Boone County, which we knew was incorrect. And so, we think it's closer to 7,000 addresses, and that's what we're kind of working off of.
And those of us in this space, we do this all the time. We believe we can get all of Boone County covered, not, maybe not just in round four, but with the pending BEAD program as well, the Broadband Equity and Access Development Program. So, there'll be more money if round four doesn't get the job done for Boone County. But I'm confident that we can get every resident, every address in this county connected through these programs.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's an exciting time for Boone County and for rural residents. By the way, I'm Jeremy Burton, Manager of Government Regulatory Affairs. I forgot to introduce myself. I apologize.
Any other questions?
So, we need to approve a letter of support.
Yes, which better track for.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the holiday closure discussion.
This, I believe, is related to the upcoming eclipse. As I understand it, certain municipalities, including schools, are going to be closed on that day, which is April 8th, is that right? And Kayla had printed off some information about various activities relating to that. And so, I thought it was important just for me to decide whether or not we wanted to close for that day.
So, do we take a holiday away? Should we add that holiday, or is that?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, wait a minute. I said that the wrong way. I'm sorry. Oh, oh, wait a minute. There's fingers being pointed at me, so maybe I shouldn't do that. I'm sorry, I've had too much coffee this morning to make that comment. Well, so that's what we need to decide if we're going to close. I know that three streets have already been closed that day around courthouse, so that means no one can get in now. The town is shut down, so.
I believe that Washington, Maine, and Meridian are all being closed by the city that day for various events.
And I, I think with the, with all the efforts that's going to be going, or all the things that are going to be going on that day, and the traveling and all that, I think, I think by far it is the safest thing to do is to close the building. Buildings, not just, not just the courthouse, I'm sorry, all county buildings.
Hi, guys. Corey Koots. I'm President of Heart of Lebanon. So, just to give you a little bit of context of the planning that's going on with this event. So, we have partnered with some folks down in Kentucky that went through this five or six years ago. And right now, we anticipate Boone County to pick up, just in the Lebanon area, about 50,000 people. So, if the same thing comes through here that went through Kentucky, it's an additional 50,000 people. I mean, we're literally talking that the streets are probably going to be gridlocked. So, that's just kind of the scope. I don't know that folks have really engaged too much in that, but we've been in a lot of talks with different organizations through town. There's seven different events planned from basically up at, like, the YMCA all the way down through the fairgrounds. So, just to give you a little context.
Appreciate that, because it is going to be, a lot more people show up and a lot more people outside, obviously. There's, you have to be outside to see what's going on, and it's a once-in-a-lifetime thing, event, so.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Well, I would commend the efforts of Lebanon to work toward this tourism and the CBB and others that have participated in this. It's tough for me as a self-employed person for 35 years to add vacation days, but I, I don't see there, there's really a choice here in this, this situation. And, you know, as you said, I think it's a much safer solution to not have the offices open that day.
Well, and this, this will be the only, only time that we'll have to, have to make this a holiday in our lifetime.
Well, you might still be Commissioner then.
Absolutely not. In 100 and, or 850 years or something? No, I don't think so. Well, I will accept a motion to make that a holiday to close all county offices.
So, second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Nielsen, update on the projects.
Good morning. Mike Nielsen, project manager. Just some quick updates on the projects that I've been working on. We'll start off with the Justice Center. We're 206 days without any recordable safety incident, which is excellent. We did install the heated mats about a week and a half ago. They seem to be working well now, just in time for this cold weather, so that worked out really well for us. We're going to be ramping up safety audits with Hagerman just because of the bitter cold weather that's out there. Most of our folks are on the inside now, but we do have folks that are still working on the outside. So, we're going to ramp up those safety audits. Along with that, we've got a visit on the 29th of this month from our insurance carrier, Travelers, who's our risk management. So, I've met with them several times. This will be an onsite walkthrough with them from a risk management standpoint. The other safety issue is we've got some deep storm structures that are going in. The holes are going to be about 28 feet deep. Three of the largest ones that we've done, so we're going to make sure that those are fenced off and we're not working around them, and make sure that those are secured. We did have an issue about a week and a half ago. Some of the heavy wind that we had lifted up some of the roofing material that was sitting on top of the roof, the truss. Picked that up, blew them over, and actually destroyed about six truss in the administration building, Building A. Working with the engineers, we're not going to be able to fix that or replace. We have to actually replace those. So, those are on back order. We're working on those. It'll slow us down a little bit, but not too much. So, we do have those truss on order to get replaced. Just a few of the milestones. The new kitchen area was prepped for the masons to start. They're actually in there building concrete walls along the, that particular area, along with the medical area as well. The VAVs, which are the heating and air conditioning, some of those control things are going in, both in Building B, and we'll be starting those in Building A. Unit A, the main entrance, as far as the steel installation is underway. We had the crane out there last week working on it. And then I spent some time with, we spent some time with IT this week to start those initial conversations about going through the cable tray, drawings, making sure that they're where Sean and his team would like them. Plus, we're looking at the labeling of those particular cables as it's getting close to being able to, to start running some of those cables at this point. Moving on, we'll be working on the building on the Sheriff's Administration, and that'll be the focus this week. And the masons will be inside the kitchen area, making sure that those walls are built. From Time Clock Plus standpoint, things are going very well. We're still on track for the end of this quarter to have one single payroll voucher that TCP data dumps into. Right now, we had a meeting last week, and the team, we're working on cleaning up the data and making sure that that's ready for the end of this quarter. As far as the needs assessment goes, working with Commissioner Wolf, we're going to try to get a date. The final report is complete. We're going through that now. I'm reviewing all of that for any errors or omissions. We're well over 150 pages in that report. It's very, very detailed, and that'll be presented to the Commissioners and the Council sometime in February at your discretion, when you want to do that.
We're looking at currently February 20th. Probably planning an evening meeting so that the public can be there if you'd like to hear what's going on with our facilities and our plan for the future. This is just a first step. It's, it's a needs assessment, so it's not actually a 20-year plan, but it is a basis to start building that 20-year plan. And I think it would be interesting for members of the public to hear what this professional organization has determined our needs going into the future will be. So, February 20th should be around 6:00. The announcement will be coming out, but it's a kind of a safe date for now. We believe it'll be at the fairgrounds. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. All right, moving on to staff reports, area plan. Do you have anything for us? Max? Max is not here. Health Department, Doc? Human Resources? IT? And the best for last, Highway Department, Mr. Parr? Hey, you got to start the day off somehow saying something nice, you know?
Moved the construction roadway permits and road closure permits due to recent ordinance updates. I have them moved to internal approvals. Those were included with the report. So, I don't have to go through all those. I'm sure everybody's really excited about that. But the items that we need to have considered for approval, there was a quote signed from R. H. Cowan for two post lifts to be installed in our shop. Recently had that executed since the last meeting, there was a long lead time to get that, and we had to have the quote executed prior to them getting us on the list to get it installed. Total amount was ten thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents, and I just need ratification of that one.
Any questions?
Moved to ratify.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
That's one of the items that's gonna be paid for with ARP funds. Next agreements are for various rural broadband projects, construction inspection. The first one's for a Comcast fiber build that was recently approved for, for right-of-way permit. This one is a task order for inspection with BFNS is, is for total not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. This project is taking place along Ninety-Sixth Street, around Pineview Drive and Ford Road. They'll be installing broadband or fiber in that area, and we wanna make sure that that gets oversight due to a project that we have upcoming to replace a structure on Pineview Drive. We'd like to get it placed out of the way, gonna take some additional oversight than, than just installing the, the line in the right-of-way. So requesting execution of Task Order Thirty-Nine.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The next one is for Spectrum Fiber Build, OH-14E. This is a fiber project that was recently approved with permit twenty-twenty-three, one-zero-one, seven-zero. This fiber build runs from about thirty-two to three-hundred south, between four-hundred east and four-twenty-one. This, this task order is for BFNS to do inspection work. It's strictly part-time work as needed around our structures and in areas that we need to make sure that the fiber gets installed to protect the right-of-way and prevent future issues. The total not to exceed of this task order is twelve thousand dollars.
Moved to approve, second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And the third one of these is for Spectrum Fiber Build, OH-01E. It's Task Order Forty-four. They're doing fiber install in the area thirty-two to five-hundred south, between one-hundred east and Middle Jamestown Road. Permit, the work in the right-of-way permit was twenty-twenty-three, one-zero-one, three-three, and they'll be doing part-time inspection work on this as well, total not to exceed is twelve thousand dollars.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The next one's Project Twenty-Twenty-three, E-Zero-Eight, that Pineview structure I referenced a little bit ago. It'll be the new small structure EA-Zero-Twenty-One. We intend to have a consultant assist us with design, hydraulic design, cost estimates permitting, creating some of the bid documents to ensure that we get this installed to meet all standards and specifications. The challenges with this one, it's also on a dead-end street. There's a cul, two cul-de-sacs, and this is the only access off Ninety-Sixth Street. So it's gonna have to be a designed run-around build for access to properties during construction. It's significant project, this pipe has been installed whenever the subdivision was new. It's clearly been worked on a couple of times. We've looked into various different ways we could not have to rip and replace, but all of those have come to the same conclusion, it has to be removed and replaced to be reinstalled. So we're asking for the execution of the agreement with Civil Con, Inc., for the assistance with the design and hydraulics for this, for this project. The not to exceed is fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. I intend to pay for this with funds that were reimbursed from a recent project on Bridge Two Seventeen. We had to pay for the bridge to be built with a walking path adjacent, and Town of Zionsville reimbursed us for the cost of the walking path for the additional width of the bridge. So this project lies within the Eagle Township area, and we would like to use those funds to pay for the design of this structure.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The next one is a VS Engineering On-Call Agreement. They, our bridge inspection consultant, we have onboard with, currently inspecting all of our bridges every two years. We had an on-call with them last year, we only use this as needed when something comes up, typically during our bridge inspections. Last year, for instance, when we had a weight-rated structures, we had bridges that get damaged during traffic crashes, they would come out to quickly do, quickly take a look at them, and having the on-call agreement, some of them we can easily build again, so we can get them further, get somebody out there quickly to take a look at, an issue that pops up.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
There's a few contracts submitted that were executed since the last meeting. I've included those with the report. Also, there were, for various items, including construction inspection on smaller projects for, working the right-of-way. Few other items just for discussion, County Road Four-Fifty North, around Three Seventy-Five, Three Fifty West to Two Seventy-Five West is anticipated for, to close for construction on January twenty-sixth. The, that'd be for the replacement of WA-Zero, Three-Zero. It's a, a large steel pipe going across the road, just north of the bike park area. It'll be closed. Contract documents allow for the closure to be a forty-five-day closure. So the detail will be Three Fifty West to Two Seventy-Five West up to Forty-Seven. So it'll be an inconvenience, likely have it reopen by the time the spring season starts for, for farming. Mostly the residential area and the agriculture areas are what's gonna be in major impact by that closure.
Just to make sure that I, I understand everything you said there is, you also have road closure signs at, right there off the interstate too, because anytime there's something goes on, then we'll have all kinds of semis that will be coming down that road.
We'll make sure we get additional signs, we actually had some post-mountain signs up there at Two Seventy-Five West, trying to deter traffic when that interstate closures have frequently happened. Hopefully it gets a little better now that the interstate project is fully open with three lanes. It's reduced the number of times it's had a full closure on the interstate, but adding additional signs along Forty-Seven will definitely assist motors to at least be told not to go that route when, when Sixty-Five's closed, I think that's the shortest distance to get around. It's not a good route, so.
No.
We can add additional signs to make sure that's taken care of during the closure.
Okay, thank you.
County Road Nine Hundred North between Eleven Hundred West and the Montgomery County Line, so between, it's up near Clinton County, Montgomery County, and Boone County where it all comes together. There's gonna be a closure expected February eighth for the replacement of what's currently known as SC-Zero-One-Five. There'll be a new Bridge Twenty-One. It's been an ongoing project for a couple of years that was found during our Culver inspection. Not a lot of residential traffic, but a lot of agriculture traffic used that roadway. Just bringing it to the attention, so if you hear of, of road closure up in that area, anticipated ninety-day closure on that project. AES is also planning to close Indianapolis Road at the Hennessy County Line, which is, they're formerly known as Indiana IPL, Indiana Power and Light. But it's AES Indiana now. They're, they're working on utility poles and anticipating a closure coming up very soon, this week, next week, depending on the weather for that work. So it's road closure permit that was submitted, just wanted to bring it to your attention. And then also, community crossing, call for projects is open. We signed those letters last time during the last meeting. Those two projects have been submitted for community crossings dollars, and we will not know awards until likely May, and we're gonna schedule those projects to be bid, so we can hopefully get those built yet this year. So those are all items I have.
Questions? Thank you. Back to my agenda. Elected officials, anyone? If not, we'll go into, start saying open discussion, sorry. The floor is open for any, uh, public comments?
Morning Commissioners, Dave Myers. You should have started to receive some notices here in the last twenty-four hours, and I just wanna read that to you here today. Notice and demand to immediately release all state and federal contracts related to the Boone County elections. Notice to agent is notice to principal, notice to principal is notice to agent. This was given, this is sent to the Boone County Election Board, the Commissioners, and the Secretary of State. I, the undersigned, one of the people, as seen in the Indiana Constitution, Article One, Section One, Republican form, serve Jewish, do notice you by necessity that you provide immediate due care. The people, please take notice that the people have previously served notices to various Boone County and Indiana state elected officials, and it's a, it's a list of all the previous notices that we've already given, so I'm not gonna go through that now, you've written through it already. Our founders gave us the Republican form of government. That form, that form divides the rights of the people away from the jurisdiction or trustees and servants, meaning that they can never trespass on them. Our rights were, were accepted, set apart for all agents of authority to handle our affairs, and our government only exists to protect the people's rights and the liberty's interest. One of those rights is free and equal elections. Among other things, the previous notice that informed you that the mean, that, that this means elections are a single day, performed on paper ballots and hand-counted. Please see the previous notices for additional information. Please take further notice that you swore a note to the people to faithfully execute the duties of the office. The maladministration and injuries committed by any bad servants regarding the right of free and equal elections is one of the most egregious acts a trustee could commit to the people. Failure to perform the duties of the office, your contract with the people is maladministration and willingly acts in bad faith, see evidence below. Maximum law reference here within our selections of maxims of law by Charles A. Weisman. Maximum Law Four-F, faith must be observed, and agent must not violate the confidence reposed in him. Maximum Law Eighty-Four-C, punishment is due if words of an oath are false. Please take further notice that, that all people have the right to remedy promptly and without delay by right. When, when a right of remedy is invaded, it is a trespass and a violation of the public trust, the Indiana Constitution. Maximum Law Forty-Nine-A, where there is legal right, there is legal remedy. Maximum Law Forty-Nine-E, to take away any remedy from, from the enforcement of that right is to take away the right itself. Please take further notice that the maladministration of federal funds impairing free the elections of state, the people informed you that county elections are maladministered because the state of Indiana is in contract with programs for federal funds as part of the Help America Vote Act of two thousand and two, and that no law, no local or special law can be passed providing, providing for conducting elections of state, county, township officers and designating the places of voting. Indiana Constitution, Article Four, Section Twenty-Two. Maximum Law Twenty-Two, Twenty-Four-Z, a contract cannot arise out of an act radically wrong or illegal. Maximum Law Fifty-One-N, favors from the government often carry with them enhanced measure of regulation. Please take final notice, the people provide instruction to act after January fifteen, twenty twenty-four to the Boone County Commissioners concerning administration of the twenty twenty-four elections in a notice and demand to comply with the Indiana Constitution. Instead of acting according to such instruction, it is my immediate demand, wish, and, and order by right that you release full disclosure of all contracts when, when the state of Indiana has been in contract with the program for federal funds that is a part of the, the Help America Vote Act of two thousand and two, related to Boone County elections. All elections must, all disclosure must be made within ten days of the receiving this notice. Furthermore, if you believe that any of the above claims are untrue or that you have, you have been delegated the right, the, the authority to do such things at conflict with the Indiana Constitution's and maximum law, please immediately show where you were delegated such authority. All responses not sworn under penalty of perjury are non-responses. If the full disclosure as instructed is not given, the people whom you swore a note will recognize it as being done purposely with, with full knowledge, intent, and malice. No court shall be able to hear, be able to rehear this matter, or it shall stand as evidence, truth, and law in a court of record. This notice is sent in the peace and love of Jesus Christ that you give, give due care to the people who hold all political power.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Alright, we'll move on to, uh...
I'd like to say just one thing.
Please go ahead.
Just because there's some new faces in the audience. We've had people come, I think this is the seventh month we've had people coming to our meetings, expressing concerns about elections, and, and I've discussed this in several meetings before, but I'm just gonna give a brief summary, it's impossible to discuss everything that's been presented to us in seven months, but basically, there's been three issues that are ra, that have been raised that we have in possibly similar elections in all ninety-two counties in the state, that when people push the single, or the straight-party button on the election machines, that they appear to not know that they're not voting in all the, all the races that are covered, or, or all the races where a Republican or Democratic candidate is running. And I propose, I've provided some stats on that in, in Zionsville in particular, because that's where contested races have been in all the races, where you can look at that. And it's about eleven percent of voters apparently don't realize that when they're hitting the straight-party button, that they're not voting in all the races, such as at-large races or school board races. And then the, the third item is, is these notices which have been served in, over the course of the past five months, to, to the election board, to us, and to some state officials. And, and really, all those notices are doing is instructing us and informing us, all of us in government, who, who are employees of the people, to, to basically do the job that we agreed to do. Whether we realized it or not, when we take an oath of the Constitution, that actually means something. And that's, that's, in essence, all those notices are doing is informing and instructing us to perform the job that we agreed to do when we were hired. I, I did have somebody send, or I did, I did have that sent to me, and I, I wanna read this because it's, it's pretty applicable to the situation, because the, like I mentioned, people have been coming to us over the course of the past seven months. They've been here, they've, they've tried to go to the election board, haven't had a lot of success there. And they've also been to the Secretary of State's office, which, which some county officials set up meetings with them. And I've been to all those meetings, I told people, I called ahead of time and told them I'm gonna come 'cause I wanted to know what's going on. And there's been a lot of, the state says, hey, this is a county decision. The county says, well, there's really nothing we can do because this is what the state statute say. And, and, I mean, one of the things in the Constitution is that all the, all the authority in government comes from the people. There's no, the government was created with no authority. And any authority comes from what is in the Constitution, that's it. That's the only authority. No authority can be made up downstream of the Constitution. And that's, seems to have been forgotten in this whole process. So somebody sent me Federalist Forty-Six, which if you don't know what the Federalist Papers is, that, it was basically a public debate when the states were considering delegating more of the power that they were given by the people to a federal government. And I just wanna read it because it's, it's, it's an interesting perspective. This was written by James Madison on January twenty-ninth, seventeen eighty-eight, about the, the, the proposal of delegating some of the state authority to the federal government. And it says, resuming the subject of the last paper, I proceed to inquire whether the federal government or the... last paper, I proceed to inquire whether the federal government or the state governments will have the advantage with regard to the predilection and support of the people. Notwithstanding the different modes in which they are appointed, we must consider both of them as substantially dependent on the great body of the citizens of the United States. I assume this position here, as it respects the first reserving the proofs for another place. The federal and state governments are in fact but different agents and trustees of the people, constituted with different powers and designated for different purposes. The adversaries of the Constitution seem to have lost sight of the people altogether in their reasonings on this subject, and to have viewed these different establishments not only as mutual rivals and enemies, but as uncontrolled by any common superior in their efforts to usurp the authorities of each other. These gentlemen must here and be reminded of their error. They must be told that the ultimate authority, wherever the derivative may be found, resides in the people alone, and that it will not depend merely on the comparative ambition or address of the different governments, whether either or which of them will be able to enlarge its sphere of jurisdiction at the expense of the other." That's all I have to say today.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Tom Woodson. I'm a resident of this county, and I'm astounded at having this kind of discussion. I don't know of any legitimate and substantiated criticism of the manner in which we've conducted elections here in Boone County. It seems to me that if a group of people, which is a very vocal minority, is coming forward and saying, we need to have paper ballots, and we need to reduce our time to vote to one day, it seems to me that that is a measure to suppress voting rather than encourage it. I attended in part, I got there a little bit late for the Election Board meeting, and I listened to Becky McClure, who is a lawyer, who is a previous judge, who is well acquainted with the law. I've also reviewed some of the material that she compiled. The Constitution gave the authority to our legislature to determine what kind of laws they were going to pass to monitor elections. The authority is with the Election Board, not with the county commissioners, not with the county council. It's with the Election Board. If somebody wants to change that, then they could go to the legislature and try to get the law changed, but right now, that's where the authority stands. It seems to me that this is a perceived problem which has not been anywhere. I mean, we all listened to the complaints about the last presidential election, and there were efforts on the person who was disappointed with that to seek judicial relief in numerous jurisdictions, none of which found any substantial basis to criticize the manner in which our last election was held. So, first of all, this request is being made to the improper body, and I hope that you all will not take any action whatsoever in response to it.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Anyone else?
Lisa Berger, Boone County Clerk. I just want to confirm, the first day of voting is the ninth. It's not a big deal for any one of us to come in. We'll have to get the machines and everything ready. The eighth, that's not an issue since we're closed, right?
You can come in, yeah. Just the offices won't be open.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. That's a good point. I wasn't even thinking about that, so, thank you for bringing that up. Yes. Anyone else?
Well, I, I don't want to judge by the...
Please, state your name, please.
My name is Richard Porter. Some of you know me, some of you don't. Some of you don't care, some of you don't. But I'm a people. I'm a people. Who sent that to you, sir?
It was...
Can we have a name, please?
I'm not going to disclose the name.
Why not? This is an open discussion. You presented it to us, why not?
It's the Federalist Papers. You can find it online.
Tell me the name.
No, please tell me the name.
I'm not... Okay. Not a problem.
It's going to a public meeting.
It's a public meeting. If you don't want to, that's fine. Here's the point. I'm a donor. I'm a voter. I've run for office. Some have won, some have lost. First me, I think I should have won, the ones I lost, but that's...
Somebody disagreed with me.
That's fine. That's fine. I can't, I'm seventy-four, seventy-five pound or older, I think, and some of you are, well, everybody here is younger than me. I can't recall ever voting on a paper ballot in Boone County, but I do remember going in with my mom at about twelve, standing next to my mom, and those mechanical things we had where you click, click, de-click, de-click. Well, that was a machine. Somebody maintained that machine. Somebody made sure it worked. Somebody talented it. It worked. My mom and dad, some of you might remember my mom and dad, different people, interesting people, very intelligent people. They told me the most important thing is for me to always vote, and I have never missed an election. I know my mom and dad never missed an election. And my name is Richard Porter, and I'm proud to say that. And I'm proud to be an American, and I'm proud to be the great state of Indiana. And I've had opportunities to go to other places, other countries, and other states, and this is the best place I've ever been, because I know my vote is counted, and I trust the people who run the election. I know these people. These people are my friends and neighbors. These people are not my enemies. They may disagree with me, which probably some do. I don't know. And I don't care. I don't care. I know they do a good job, and I'm proud of the job they've done. I trust Becky McClure implicitly. I have known her as a judge and a personal friend. That lady knows what she's talking about. She's not stupid. She knows what the law is. And honestly, if my personal opinion is, the document that was printed in by you, sir, was gibberish. I apologize. It was gibberish. It reminds me of stuff that I saw when I was led into city court, and people would come in, and occasionally you would have somebody starting to spout stuff like the law of the Vatican or maritime law. I remember that specifically. Guess what? The Vatican is landlocked. It doesn't have an ocean, but some guy said it did, and he had some law that applied to what we were talking about. It's kind of what you guys get. Now, he's, I'm sure, he's fine personally, don't misunderstand. I mean, I'm not disparaging you, but honestly, that meant nothing. I encourage you to do exactly what you choose to do as our Commissioners, our Commissioners, people that we voted for and we trust. Leave it alone. Let it go as it is. It's working fine. I've spoken too long. Anybody have any questions for him? Anybody else want to hit him? Well, maybe. I'll sit there.
Thank you. All right, last call.
Well, if there's nobody else, I, I sat down over the weekend. I had a really horrible case of strep throat over the weekend, and I, for anybody that knows me knows that sitting in a chair for two days just almost killed me. And, but the time I spent thinking about this, and I just feel like, you know, we're entering into an election season here, and I just think it's fair for the citizens to know where I stand on this. So, I'm going to read a statement that I wrote. Bear with me for just a minute. First off, I want to commend the citizens that have been presenting to us for the efforts that they have made up to this point. As county Commissioners, we don't often get feedback on issues from the citizens until after a decision is made, and then some choose to criticize the process and use phrases like, I did not know anything about that, or the county has done this behind closed doors. While these statements could not be further from the truth, this seems to be a mantra that continues to be repeated. We meet here in this chamber twice a month in public meetings to conduct the business of Boone County. The citizens made an effort to be on our agenda several times, and also approached the county election board to be on theirs. The efforts made to engage the public have been admirable, with over a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and seventy members of the public who've reached out to us Commissioners with a document they believe in, several documents at this point in time that they believe in, and that they have signed. The group presented several forms of information as well as some statistical analysis that has some merit, and likely, I agree with some of the conclusions which have been presented. However, I don't agree with all of them. And more importantly, I don't agree with the proposed process by which they believe provides a remedy to the concerns. I researched the state constitution, the related state codes, along with several examples of case law, and have determined for myself that this body does not have the authority or the ability to supersede the decisions made by the county election board. I am sure there's a disagreement with that by many members of the public, and specifically by many of the citizens who have recently attended our meetings. It has been stated that this board must uphold the Constitution by any means, and these suggestions have mostly been focused on the language in Article Two of the Indiana Constitution. However, we have a responsibility to support the Constitution of Indiana in its entirety, including Article Four, which gives specific rights to the state legislature to pass laws that govern the process by which we operate, including how elections are performed. Indiana code, under which we must operate, specifically addresses electronic voting machines and the methods of voting. During the presentations before the Commissioners, it has been stated that this group has found no specific supportable evidence of voter fraud, or where the machines used currently have been tampered with. I recently met with two of the citizens who support the requests made for balloting changes. I found them to be remarkably informed, extremely respectful, and I hold both of them in high regard for the research that they've done, the dedication to their beliefs, and the efforts they've made. We found agreement on some issues and not on others. One of the strongest foundations of our republic is that discussion and public debate are supported by our Constitution, and this is also supported by most of the people who live in this country. Unfortunately, it has been, become common practice in our country to ignore the value of debate and the ability to respectfully disagree without extensive animosity. I asked if these gentlemen had met with legislators, and they said they had not, so I offered at that meeting to assist in any way that I could to facilitate meetings with them, with our state legislators. Some members of this group have stated to me that if we did not take the actions requested of us, and this was not from the gentleman I met with, that they would make every attempt to get me defeated in the next election. That's your right to do so. I encourage every one of us to be involved in our election process. I would like everyone to take an active role in our elections, to be honest with you. I would, however, encourage these individuals and any others paying attention to review the body of work of the Commissioners that we've completed in the last several years as a whole, and not make hasty emotionally discharged decisions over one issue. I've never taken any action in this seat, nor have I voted for any action specifically to garner a vote, and I do not intend to do so now. Therefore, my conclusion is that this board has no authority nor any mechanism by which to take over the local election process. I believe that such efforts to do so are unlawful, and that as an elected official, I do not believe that I can support any action that would violate state or federal law. In conclusion, I cannot make any motion or second any motion or support any motion that supersedes the authority of the county election board, and as always, I'm more than happy to sit down with anyone and talk to you about it. Thanks.
The comments that I'll make is that I really appreciate all the information that you've brought to us, and it's very important. Some of the laws that I have, that I now understand deeper, I guess, because I didn't know them before, but one of the laws that we would break would be a level six felony if we did anything on this, and I will not be a part of that. I understand what you're doing and looking at it, and I think that's extremely important for the public to do that and bring those things to us, to help us understand in more detail of what you're looking at. But as far as breaking any state or federal laws, I will not do that. And so, it's not that I don't completely disagree with what you're doing, it's just that the law is the law, and I will follow that. But thank you very much for your comments and your points that you brought to us. That's extremely important. And like Jeff said, this is an open meeting, and we welcome anything and everything at every meeting, no matter how long it takes. We will, we will listen to the people. Thank you all for being here. Really appreciate it. It's a nice, warm place to be, instead of being outside. So, we will move on to document signing and claims.
Got a big batch of claims here. I move to approve the claims as...
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
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 And we've only got one piece of mail, one piece of mail, just a notice from Clinton Circuit Court on some county litigation. That's it. That's all I have, gentlemen.
One more motion.
Move it, Chair.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.